Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Groceal Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anybody want to change the agenda from that presented? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support. Support from Jim, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is the minutes from the May 20, 2019 meeting. Does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding those minutes? Dan?
No.
Jay?
No.
Jim?
No.
Eric?
No.
Huda?
Nope.
Entertainer, a motion please to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Jay, support. From Eric, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, as usual, Lori, well done. We always appreciate your work. Next item is public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak with the commission about any item not on the agenda. Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the first item, a business, which is a site plan review for a subdivision, a site condominium project called Shady Acres. The applicant is Darrell Randee, R-A-N-D-E, 27900 South Point Drive, Groceal. Representing Mr. Randee is Mr. Tim Grosskloss. The legal description of the property is Lot Number 290 of Supervisor's Groceal Plot Number 21. The common description is 27990 South Point Drive. This is on the northwest corner of the intersection of South Point and Broadhead Road. And this is immediately north of the bridge, which goes on to South Point. The proposal, there currently is a three-and-a-half acre site that contains two separate lots that run east-west along Broadhead. The lot closest to South Point Drive is vacant. The lot closest to the water is the residence 27990. The proposal is to combine both lots into a site condominium project in order to give the lot along South Point Drive a non-contiguous 10-foot-by-50-foot section of waterfront property in the developed waterfront lot. The zoning is R1B with a single-family residential. The process for site condominiums is outlined in Chapter 71 of the municipal code, and it specifies that the processes follow Chapter 238 of Subdivision Control, also in the municipal code. That outlines six steps. Step one is a pre-application review. That was conducted at the May meeting. Two is a Planning Commission pre-preliminary plat approval, followed by a Planning Commission tentative preliminary approval. Finally, a board tentative preliminary approval, and then board final approval, and then finally board plat approval. Six steps, long process. We're at step two, which is the Planning Commission pre-preliminary plat review. The Planning Commission may or may not vote on this matter tonight. At this point, I'll stop and look to Mr. Borden to provide additional details.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the introduction. You've probably covered half of my points already, so I'll make this nice and quick. So here is a visual of the property that the chairman just described. So this is the existing residence. If you can just see my cursor on there, sort of the northwest corner of South Point, which runs along the right side, and Broadhead along the south side of the property. As Chairman mentioned, the request before you is a two-unit site condominium under the township code. This is essentially the process and the design standards and the requirements are laid out in three separate chapters, so there's a lot to take into consideration. We have to look at the condominium provisions, the subdivision control ordinance, which lays out all of the design requirements, even though it's not a subdivision per se. The design requirements are the same, and then also the applicable regulations within the zoning ordinance. So there is a lot to look at here. Chairman mentioned, we did already conduct the pre-application conference. He went through the process already. We're looking at this as a preliminary, technically, it's a pre-preliminary, I think is the way it reads. I think I wrote it up as a preliminary, but that's essentially where we are this evening. So these are a few photographs of the site. The chairman was kind enough to do some site visits and provide me with some photos as part of the review process. So in the left side, you have a view of the waterfront, obviously. In the middle slash bottom right, we have a view looking towards the water along Broadhead. And then in the upper right, we have a view of the residence almost from the corner, not quite from the intersection, but angled in towards the site. So you get a feel for some actual street-level views of the property as it relates to this overhead aerial image. The plan itself, hopefully, this is somewhat legible. I tried my best. I couldn't scan the entire plan in, so I had to take a photograph of it. So I stood on a chair, I did not fall off said chair, and tried to get a straight-down photograph of this, and I did the best I could. So, as was described earlier, so prior to 1990, this was a single parcel. So this three-plus acre, really large-sized waterfront parcel, frontage on South Point and on Broadhead, residence constructed here. In 1990, the township granted a land division that split off the front parcel at the corner, oopsie. So that is how this exists now. So as part of this plan, and again, it was described verbally, but I want to show you graphically. So the proposal would entail the majority of this parcel would, with the existing residence, would be Unit 1 of this new site condo. Essentially, everything at the parcel boundary save for this new piece of waterfront land with the attempt to then create, as part of the site condo, a non-contiguous or a leapfrog situation whereby Unit 2 would have this piece of land, and I believe it was 50 by 10, if I'm not mistaken, at the waterfront along the shoreline. So that's the non-submerged portion, and then, obviously, the actual property descriptions extend out into the river. So that's really what we're looking at here tonight. There already are two buildable parcels contained as part of this property. What the petitioner is trying to do is obtain waterfront access for the parcel at the corner. So again, kind of a non-contiguous combination, if you will, via the use of the site condominium tool. That's really the gist of why we're here. A quick overview of my entire review letter. So the first one is something the petitioner, well, the petitioner will have to obviously address most of these. Some of them are pretty straightforward, easy little quick fixes or just questions to be answered. Some of them are going to require some refinement and/or additional information. So the very first one is that, under your condominium ordinance as well as your subdivision control regulations, any site condominium or any new development, a new subdivision or a new condominium that abuts public roadways has to have those roadways improved to current requirements if they are not already. Those of you that were able to get out there, and I showed this, one of these photos, you can see Broadhead is a gravel road. So Broadhead is not improved to current specifications. So if this project is to move forward, part of site condominium approval will require the petitioner to improve Broadhead Road, the entire length of the property that it abuts. So that's point number one. The second one is just kind of a correction clarification. There are a few different indications of lot areas contained, some of which include submerged lands, some of which are essentially what we would count as lot area, which would be just the developable portion or the portion above the waterline. So I'm just asking for a little clarification, because like for Unit 1, we've got total, we've got submerged, we've got net, that's pretty self-explanatory. Unit 2 is identified only as .607, which is actually much larger than what the lot area calculation would be were we to count it the way we would do it under definitions in the zoning ordinance. So we'd like some clarification there. The big one, we already talked about. So I, my opinion, trying to create waterfront access in a non-contiguous method, sort of, I think one of the terms I used in my letter was leapfrogging, sort of jumping over the existing residential parcel to try to gain waterfront access for a detached, non-contiguous separate parcel, I just don't see how that should be allowed. We wouldn't allow it in a land division, we wouldn't allow it in a subdivision. I think the same applies in a site condominium situation. It's simply, it's not just this particular instance. I can think about the long-term implications of allowing more people to have waterfront access for parcels that aren't actually waterfront parcels. And I think if you think about all of the locations where this could potentially occur, you could really start to see some issues arise on the waterfront, not to mention some issues between neighbors with intensification of the use of that property. So that's probably the biggest hang-up I have with this entire request. The next one is something that will, if this is to move forward, we will obtain input from a few other bodies. So the ordinance does allow you to require sidewalks as part of a site condominium development. Now, there are no sidewalks currently on Broadhead or the west side of South Point. There is a bike path on the opposite side, and quite frankly, at face value, I don't really see the benefit of requiring sidewalks. But with that being said, you do have a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, and I am not 100% up to speed with what their current plans are. So if, given their input, there is reason to require sidewalks, whether it's, you know, along Broadhead or just along South Point, whatever it might be, we would want to take that into consideration as part of this process. I don't, right now, they would probably just be sidewalks to nowhere, and if there are no plans to further expand that, then it's probably unnecessary. But I also don't want to miss an opportunity, if it does fall into place and aligns with another committee's job or their plans for the future, I'd want to make sure that we get that in as part of this. There is not a landscape plan currently included. The only ordinance requirement is for street trees. We would need at some point in time a landscape plan to be provided. That being said, you can see in the aerial photo, my guess is those requirements are probably met with existing trees. But we would want to see this as part of a plan and understand that the street trees would be required so that if and when Unit 2 or the frontage, the corner parcel is developed, at least some of these trees would have to remain, even if they're in the building envelope potentially. We do have woodlands ordinances, obviously, we'd have to get into greater detail, but at a minimum, we need to make sure those street trees are retained to keep this in Next one is the applicant did provide in the time since pre-app and up to and including this submittal, they did provide the condominium documents as required. So there are condominiums require master deeds and bylaws, so there is a draft of that provided. Those are usually pretty technical legal documents, and I don't usually offer comments unless I see something really out of whack or something really catches my eye. I usually defer detailed review of those or technical reviews to the township attorney. So that would be something we'd look for in the future. Similarly, any site engineering issues that arise, including utilities and infrastructure, we'll want to get input from DPS as well as the township engineering consultant. And then lastly, anything that police or fire may have offered or may offer up as part of this review process, we'd want to take that into consideration as well. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Very good, Brian, thank you very much. Great summary. At this point, let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Grosskloss, I believe you're representing. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Tim Grosskloss, thank you all for coming. Just a couple of issues. One, you mentioned that this was R1B zoning, and Brian calls this out as R1A, and it's also on the zoning map as R1A.
Negative, it's R1B with an R1E overlay.
So the zoning is currently?
Zoning is R1E overlay.
So anytime we split, I do think the base zoning, I think, is R1A.
Okay.
If I'm looking at the map correctly. Anytime we split or create a new parcel, apply a new site condominium, then the R1E overlay requirements kick in. So yes. Does that make sense? Sorry, R1E does apply.
Yeah, stand corrected, R1A.
Okay, very good. That's waterfront provisions. You know, I received this from Brian on Friday, so I haven't really had time to address any of these issues. So our request, I guess, would be to table this, give us some time to absorb this and make some revisions. But I would point out a couple of things. One, with all due respect, Brian, I don't see that word leapfrog in the ordinance. You know, I don't see that. And what happens with a condominium is it's considered one parcel. There is no leapfrog. And I think you all received a copy of the same two-site condo on West River and Hawthorne. So it has been approved in the past. I was just giving everyone a minute to look at that. The other thing I'd like the Planning Commission to consider is that, you know, I'm a real estate broker too, and I look at what people want in the market, and people don't want three-acre sites. It's beautiful for all the neighbors, but really difficult to sell or to get anyone, even if they have the money, they don't want to spend it. So I think we need to think about better land use, better access to the water. This is a perfect opportunity to do that. So in closing, we'd like to table, if we can, and revise our plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, comments from the commission, please. Jay, let's start with you.
Yeah, I guess I would ask both the chair and Brian's thoughts on, you know, how much of this we want to go into. I'm prepared to ask some questions and see what the responses are, and to the extent the answer is, we'll get back to you, that's fine too. But if we don't want to spend the time on that, I'm happy to hold those until next time.
No, I think it's important for the applicant to hear the thoughts and questions of the commission sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So please feel free to...
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Proceed.
Yeah, so the, these questions are really as much for the applicant as for Brian, but I guess I'm interested in both, the thoughts of both. You know, I think the, as you saw in Brian's note, the, you know, he says that aside from longstanding instances where roadway bisects a waterfront parcel, we're unaware of other projects where the township granted non-contiguous combination. I guess I would ask the, you know, the question, maybe this part's for Brian, but then also what alternatives maybe were evaluated, maybe for the applicant, you know, to get that. In other words, could have been done through an easement or any other sort of method.
Well, so the township has these rules on docks. Who's allowed to have a dock and how many boats you can have at each of these docks. And that requires other governmental approvals outside of the township, and they won't allow you to have a dock if you don't own the land. So an easement doesn't allow you to have a dock.
Okay, all right. And then, so reading between the lines here, and maybe it's clearer than between the lines, but just to make sure, you know, I understand. The purpose of going to the condo approach is to get that, as you said, one unit, one parcel, that the owners of the condominium complex could, can designate access to certain areas, right?
That's correct, yes.
And then the flip side of that, though, is, as I understand it, by going to the condominium rules, it brings in road improvement requirements that wouldn't be required in the other, in any other scenario. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That was brought up in this Friday letter, which we were a little bit unaware of, but looks correct.
All right, so I won't ask you what your thoughts are on that yet unless you're prepared to share them.
No, we'd like to, I mean, we know that's a requirement and we need to address that.
Okay.
But we really haven't had time to do that.
And there are, what, six homes using it currently, using that street currently?
Correct.
This would be a seventh.
Correct.
Is that the way to think about it? Okay. And the other question I had is, and this wasn't raised in the letter, but along South Point, along that area, there are pretty consistent setbacks of the homes, including the existing home. I don't believe there would be any requirement to, you know, it's not like waterfront property where, you know, it has the vision triangles, et cetera. I mean, is there any issue with having a home built closer to South Point than all the rest going north from there?
Brian?
Yeah, in this case, no, because it's not a waterfront lot. It's a corner inland parcel. It's not a waterfront lot.
Right, but that...
Provisions of the average shoreline setback only apply along the waterfront.
They only, but there's no general front yard setback sort of uniformity rule? I didn't think so. I just wanted to ask.
A quick question, though. Does that change if the waterfront access of that small corner is allowed, then all of a sudden that parcel has waterfront access? Does that change how we look at that property?
I think, as I've already sort of noted, I don't think it should be allowed to have waterfront access. But, you know, at that point, if it's considered in that light, I mean, then the parcel's essentially unbuildable, because the average shoreline setback would be off the property. So I think it would be really tough to apply that regulation in this particular instance.
Well, I guess I... I raise it because...
Absolutely.
You've got two sides of this coin, and, you know, sometimes you have that saying, you want your cake and you want to eat it too.
If I may, if you look at the south end of Grow Road, or I'm sorry, well, Grow Road, where South Point meets it, that's the same scenario, and I think there's three houses on Grow Road. So the difference is they have two road sides, two road fronts.
And on the other side of the road from the property we're talking about on Broadhead, there's a house, there's five houses there, and it's actually lined up, if you look at the site plans, it's lined up with those houses there, so it does meet the setback of those houses. So it's lined up with the side, on the side of the street.
On Broadhead, on the Broadhead side.
Right.
Yeah, I think Mr. Fuji was asking about the South Point.
Yeah, and, sir, are you Mr. Randee?
Randee, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I guess I'll ask the question of Brian, and then to the extent you think it's more appropriate to have the discussion another time or place, but, you know, Mr. Grosskloss has given the example of, I believe it was his house coming off Hawthorne Glen, and saying that it's the same sort of thing. You seem to draw a distinction where it crosses a, where there's a roadway that bisects the waterfront parcel. And I think what you're suggesting there is that if I own a house on East River, for example, there's a roadway in between, I own the land on the other side, even though there's a road in between, does it make sense to address at this point Mr. Grosskloss's point that we do have at least one similar example? Or is there a distinction that you could point out between what he's showing?
Well, I mean, part of it is, I would ask how long ago those were approved. That would be my, I mean, I would, I'm going to answer your question with the question, and I couldn't...
Clearly not an answer I can provide.
I couldn't give you the exact date, I can tell you...
It's about 20, 20 years ago?
Not recently.
No, it's about 20 years ago.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. You remember, because, I remember, because I was living in the Hawthorne condos, and it was a hotly contested issue at the time. The condo association, I guess the people in that first unit had an issue with the initial lot split, and then the aspect of access for the back parcel toward the road. But I looked at it the same way, that when you see West River Road crossing, you don't have the issue then of having to cross somebody else's property to get to your waterfront. But...
If I may, the whole issue, you know, you can't own a waterfront parcel and have a dock on it without a primary residence. That's the rule. So, you know, Hawthorne is non-contiguous. It isn't connected in any way to the boat dock. And by the way, just for history, I didn't submit that. Chester Drake owned that property and submitted that.
He owned the one, the roadside.
Right, and then we bought from him. So it's non-contiguous, but it's still all one condo parcel.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just remembered, there's one other similar instance on Church Road, where I believe a house that is on Church but not on the waterfront was able to purchase either the road end, but built, was able to build a dock on the, at the base of Church Road. And that was probably also 10, 15 years ago. But that is one other instance that I know of, where a house that is not on the waterfront has gotten waterfront access by purchasing either the road end or a portion of that. And he uses, he has an easement with a neighbor to get around, if I'm not mistaken, to get around the, you know, the border, the traffic border.
There's another one of those on West River Road, where I think they live on Lakewood. But I don't know when that was created or if it's legal, but it exists.
Additional thoughts, Jay?
I do not have additional thoughts, but it's an interesting, interesting situation, and look forward to revised discussion.
If I may, just to comment on, with a point you mentioned about having to cross other property, Broadhead is right there, and there is access along Broadhead. I mean, my property only goes, you know, there's a 60-foot easement on the road, there's a probably 20-foot strip, then there's a whole area down the other end. On the plans, there's also an easement planned on that as well to give them access as well, to, for your concern.
I think I saw that on one of the maps, you've been drawing out.
Yep. So I want to make that clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes. Looking from an aerial view, I noticed that, looking down South Point Road, that, and this house has a South Point address, as far as I know, and it faces South Point Road. It seems that it's very, it's very uniform along South Point Road. You know, it's carrying that uniformity that we tried to create with zoning ordinances. And I think what was done in the, from my understanding, there was a lot split, and which doesn't carry this uniformity that was there before. And also, I know, I want to note that the current survey doesn't, doesn't, doesn't show that lot split. You know, the survey is basically a... You know, the survey is basically a graphic description of a legal description, and it, right now, it doesn't show that lot split. So that may have been completed, but I think right now, we're, it's up to this board to approve a very unique condition on top of a very unique condition that was, that was approved, you know, a while back, correct or not correct? And that's, I guess, that's the questions that are going through my mind right now.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Davis?
Couple of questions. I think you had answered the Drake question, so thank you. When I, I drove down by the site, and I was parked on Broadhead, and so my thought was that the person would go down their driveway, walk down Broadhead, and then try to access. Is that how you envision it? Because you'd mentioned earlier that it became, it became one parcel, and that you could walk across the grass, so which did you intend on walking across the grass?
Well, the 10-foot easement, you know, would provide a roadway, and the, on this two-lot front, I think it's a 50-foot setback is required for the houses, if I'm not mistaken. So there's really 50 feet of unusable property there.
Okay. And you put another, there was another map that was in here, the end of Grow and West River. What was...